It's seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting in order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Denny, uh, second by Mr. Norton, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Move on to the rest of item number two, which is a walk-in period, are there any walk-ins? No walk-ins tonight. We will move on to number three, which is the presentation of a check from Sustainable Situate.
Just have a couple of minutes, I don't forget to thank someone. So I'm Kathy Sarudi from Sustainable Situate, and I'm one of the founding members of the group, and I'm also the membership liaison. Usually Lisa Bertola would be here, I'm sure you're familiar with Lisa. She's actually in France, flying back today, so she's probably at Logan. So that's why I'm here in her stead. So you, I believe you're familiar with Sustainable Situate, we're the local environmental group in town. And we are involved in lots of different conservation, recycling, community gardens, Solarize Situate, the wonderful Earth Day event that happened on Sunday.
Yep.
And we help with Chip Shape Day recycling. So I'm actually here about recycling tonight because I have a check to present. And to, and I just want to mention a little bit about our efforts in recycling, because we've helped Al and Kevin in the past. We've helped them procure new recycling bins, yep.
Just once, I want everyone to be able to hear you.
Yes, yes.
Zach, can you hear, uh, Ms. Sarudi?
Need this up?
Thank you Kathy.
Yep. Okay, so I'm here to highlight our partnership with the town, to help promote recycling throughout Situate. And we've helped Al and Kevin in the past to procure those green mesh recycling bins that you see throughout town. And I'm here tonight to present additional monies to procure some more of those great bins. So I actually have a check for a very interesting amount, it's a very exact figure. It's $1,142.46. And I want to present that to the town, and before I do, I just want to thank our sponsors and our volunteers, because this check is a result of their efforts. And I just want to mention the sponsors, we have a sponsorship program where sponsors donate a hundred dollars toward a recycled bin, and we had the following sponsors. Donna and Al Bangert, Mary Norton for Cohasset Yoga Center, the Hingham Institution for Savings, Dr. Gordon Price, and Jim McGinnis for Village Market. And also, we had a team of volunteers, basically go to the transfer station and collect money on a cold weekend in October. And I just want to name those folks as well, because it was a, it was a good effort on everyone's part. Lisa Bertola, of course, Jeannie Boyce, myself, Kathy Sarudi, Gwen Morgan, Susan Ovenden, Jeanne Shildneck, and Jay Silva. So those folks helped make this happen, and we are thrilled to be able to partner with the town to promote recycling. And I see lots of bins out there, I see them being used all the time. I think I could see even more out there, so we're thrilled to present this check.
And we are thrilled that you're taking the lead on this, I mean, we are, we've been acknowledged, as you mentioned, just this weekend at the Earth Day celebration in the, in the wind turbine, as a leader in the green initiative in the state. You know, we had the secretary there, we had the commissioner there, on a rainy Sunday afternoon, it was quite a turnout, and a great event held. So, and you were there in full force, and we appreciate you, we appreciate your effort, and, you know, keep moving us forward in the green area. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just, I just want to say, you know, both to you, Kathy and Lisa, you guys have done a wonderful job with Sustainable Situate, trying to like encourage people to recycle, whether it's, um, um, mercury items, you know, the, what do you call them, the thermometers, or thermostats rather, as well as the bins. And I just say, I commend you, I mean, it's, it's very rare that the town's able to find people who are willing to donate money back, and this is a good cause. So I think the board here is very encouraged, as well as the DPW, that, you know, there are people who are really willing to actually, you know, put their, their words to, to the action. And, and, and that's a, speaks volumes to both you and your, the group Sustainable Situate, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And I, last thing I just want to say is that I think one of the reasons we're so successful is that we partner with the town so much. It's just a wonderful partnership, so we hope to continue.
Kathy, thank you very much. Why don't you give it to Kim?
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen accept on the town's behalf the kind gift of $1,142.46 from Sustainable Situate for the purchase of additional recycled bins to be placed in strategic positions throughout the town. This donation is made possible via sponsorship and collections.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Kathy, thank you very much, and.
Thank you Kathy.
Make sure you thank everyone in your group for us as well, and especially the sponsors. John wrote them down, if we can just repeat that again.
Sure. Donna and Al Bangert, Mary Norton, Hingham Institute for Savings, Gordon Price and Jim McMan, McManus, McGinnis, McGinnis. Which is, so I'll back up. Gordon Price being the Optical Center down on Front Street, as well as Jim McGinnis, who happens to be Situate Village Market. So these are people in the businesses who are also very concerned about recycling, so it's, it's a great, a great thing. So thank you all, including even Al Bangert and his wife who are sitting here tonight, thank you.
Great. Moving on to item number four, which is a discussion vote of a Hawker's federal license. And this is for James Michael Healy. Are you here? Have a seat. How are you?
Good, good thanks.
If you can just give us your address real quick.
Seventy-one Laidhouse Road.
And we got your packet, we got your information, we got your letter. You want to set up a hot dog stand to sell hot dogs, sausages, and all that sort of stuff? We recently passed all of the, are they considered bylaws or are they?
General, general policies.
Policies, that's what I'm looking for. Policies, the guidelines for this. And I know you weren't specific, at least in the motion, as to where you want to go.
I have a decision.
Oh, good. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your plan, and where you want to go?
Uh, the plan is, like I, you pointed out, just hot dog, sausages, maybe a couple sandwich specials here and there. And I was hoping, if I could get your permission, to set up a Pier Forty-four parking lot. I spoke to the owner of the tavern yesterday, Jimmy Mulvey, and he had no problems with it whatsoever. Everything short of getting a letter from him, but I talked to him in person, and he's, he was very supportive and didn't have any trouble with it, so. I know there's the three-hundred-foot rule with exceptions, so I would hope that would be an exception to, to that rule.
Okay. Any questions? Let's talk about the location, second. Is there any questions in terms of just what he's selling, what he's doing, and then we can get to the location after the fact?
No.
Okay. So let's jump right to the location. So, um, the three-hundred, are there any other establishments that that would be within three-hundred feet of? The Barker Tavern, pr- maybe? Probably?
No, it's way far.
No, no, but I'm just trying to think of other places that sell food. Probably nothing in the harbor, right?
Nothing in the harbor.
It's just barely within three-hundred feet of the tavern. I know the Barker would, is way far away, so.
Now, do we want to add this as a, Kim, do you have any?
No, I just didn't know we might want to ask, we could ask Officer Thompson to do the GPS circle, is that what's called?
Yeah.
So, um, just about the three-hundred feet, just to double check.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you've got water on all sides, the yacht club wouldn't be an issue, Barker Tavern may be in it, but I don't think they care. Situate Tavern, and then moving back.
Let me ask you this, not that, with Pier Forty-four, we have a right to place it at the town, I say the town pier, the town landing, correct? On the other side of Pier Forty-four?
Jericho Ramp?
Jericho Ramp. I mean, I know that's, that's state-owned, but, but despite being, I know the feds have access, at least to the thing, but it's town-owned.
Right.
Town-owned.
Right. And my only reason for suggesting that location is it's a little bit further away from Situate, but also.
My only thing with that is, being a boater, I'd hate to be in there taking up any precious parking spaces in the boat ramp parking lot.
Don't think you would though, because of that green space right there on Jericho, which would give you a lot of access.
Yeah, if the grass isn't a problem, I know it's close to the road.
Would do you both.
But even still, I know a lot of people even pull up onto the grass, because the, if they have a big enough truck and a trailer, they can't.
I'm only thinking about that, Mr. Healy, from the standpoint, standpoint, that you've got boaters who might say, hey, guess what, they're coming off the dock next door, grab something from you, as opposed to having to go around the old building at the Situate Community Building. It's right there, plus boaters who are going down with the boat ramp, you might have more.
Yeah.
Opportunities. That's my only reason for suggesting.
Yeah, I just, I look at the Pier parking lot as just a big wide open space, it's, I know you guys aren't really going to be using it for anything for a while.
Well, wait till next month.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I mean, for the meantime, you know.
Where are you thinking about going, in?
I was, I'm just mainly thinking back, you know, almost back in the corner, at least as close to the water as I can get, in the back rows there.
In the corner, almost behind the building, or on the other side?
No, if you're looking at the building to the right, between, you know, in the parking lot, between the building and the house next door. And I just look at it as a wide open space, and there's plenty of parking, and not going to get in anybody's way in the boat ramp. Shouldn't be any traffic problems.
Sean?
He raises a good point, because if, if you have a long trailer with a, with a pickup truck, an extended cab, or something like, they probably do drive up on the grass, so he might find himself having to move back and forth. That would, my first thought would have been, you know, you know, how does an existing, it's within three-hundred feet, and how does, you know, an existing business feel about it? You know, and, and, Mike, if he said he'd talked to Jim, and Jim doesn't have a problem with it, then, then I don't, you know. That would, that would be my biggest concern, is, you know, we're within the three-hundred feet, but if Jim doesn't have a problem, I'm.
I just look at it as a, just strictly parking, I don't want to have, I mean, that's a great spot to be on the grass there, I just worry about people pulling up on the sidewalk, or taking up a space in the trail or parking lot, and having some sort of a problem, you know, with a boater or something. Pier Forty-four is just a big wide open parking lot.
I think part of our concern is, and I think John was alluding to that too, is there's not going to be a ton of traffic in the back of a parking lot, whereas he's trying to get you closer to some action.
No, I understand, yeah, absolutely. I just, you know, I'm still close enough, I feel, to the actual boat ramp itself, and.
Rick?
This is a little awkward, I'm just going to preface. I have no doubt at all you spoke to Mr. Mulvey, but I'm just a little worried about setting a precedent on just someone's, someone's word.
Yeah, we need something.
And I'm not saying at all that I distrust you, but, you know, there's potential for, you know, miscommunication and all that sort of stuff. And, you know, Sean, I hear you, you know, you know Mr. Healy and all that, but I just worry about that. So if we were to approve it, I would say, pending, contingent upon. I'm fine with a contingent upon thing, I don't want to like nuke you here, then make you come back, sort of thing. But that's my only concern, just in the context of precedents.
Yeah, I agree. Joe?
Again, on the, on the future use, I think of Pier Forty-four concerns me. And I think you're probably safe in saying we won't be doing anything in the way of change over the next couple of months. I'll guarantee though. But also during those couple of months, we will probably, if we're going to do, allow you, we'll probably allow some sort of limited functions and meetings down there also.
And that's if you guys have a, you know, if, I don't know, if somebody could keep me up to date, if you have a function, I won't be there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, but the function would take the parking places, and nobody would ever be able to get to you.
I don't want to get in you guys' any, the town's way.
I just want to make you aware of that.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, that, again, I think that the, John suggested that Jericho would probably be a better one, for a lot of reasons, for you and.
The, the reason why I was saying it was for a few reasons. One was, you've got the marina, the private marina right next to it. You've got the public marina. There are also parking benches right in the sidewalk on the water side, so people can walk across.
Right.
Plus, the other option is you've got people who are walking on Jericho. You might say, well gee, I need people to park. They're still going to park at Pier Forty-four if they want to have a hot dog, they'll stop there and walk over. I just think that you have more of an opportunity with the ambiguity of what the board's going to do in the future with it.
Right.
But that's the only reason why, Mr. Healy, I'm not trying to sidetrack you here and say do it, I'm just thinking that, given all these potential venues or avenues of, of business opportunity, I just thought maybe it might be helpful to you, that's all. Plus, long-term, if you're there, with the grass, that's another nice thing, there's not too many green space, and certainly Pier Forty-four right now has nothing but impervious pavement, that is not a attractive location, but with the grass up there.
Yep.
You've got some visibility with people driving by, that's all.
Yeah, like it was, you know, it's an idea, and, you know, I'm not talking about being so far off the road that nobody would see me over there, but I just look at it as a big wide open space, and there is parking, I don't have to worry about people stopping on the sidewalk or in the road, tying up trailer spots over at the town, you know, the boat ramp. So, maybe, and if you guys end up doing something with that someday, and there's no more space there, then the, you know, we can talk to you next time around about using that area over there.
Tricia, did you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I guess since this is a new policy for us that the board's working under, I think before they come to you for approval on the go-forward, they've already been vetted by the Officer Thompson and the chief for any issues. I'm just concerned about the precedence it sets, letting something buddy bend at the Pier Forty-four parking lot. And this gentleman's selling hot dogs, how can we now refuse someone who sells something different on a peddler cart, like ice cream, or something different? And I'm worried about liability issues, I think it's decidedly different than our other beach parking lots. With due respect to the applicant, he has a number of locations listing here, but the way I see this is, it's not something we've done before, and it could open up Pandora's box, in my humble opinion.
If I understand the policy correctly, if I say you did grant me to use that space, I would be the only person with a town's Hawker Peddler's license that can use the space.
Selling food, selling, selling a specific item.
Okay, alright.
Not necessarily. Our, our policy allows us, we do not restrict ourselves to one peddler per site. We happen to have six sites, and at the time, six applications, but there's nothing in our policy that for, self-forbids us to have only one peddler at one location.
I think we alluded to that, though. I think we, it was our sort of intent, but it wasn't, it's not written down or anything like that.
We, we have ice cream vendors who, two or three of them will go to the same sites, I think.
Correct, that's right.
At least two of them, I think, that I know of, so.
Regarding the Jericho Ramp, the state owns the ramp, we own the parking lot, so there's nothing, you know, Mr. Denny, he's right about in terms of our access to, it might get people walking with a hot dog to walk out to the, as a walker, stroller, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I understand, definitely.
And we're lying, Henry Chris Road. If you look at Pier Forty-four, at the building, if memory serves me correctly, is the parking area directly in front of the building, and then further to the left, where they have the trash receptacle, there's more area there, which would then be right up against the town, I think, area.
That would be against the marina, private marina.
The private marina?
Yeah.
But that spot wouldn't.
There's like one space.
Yeah, you're right, you're still on that land.
Still on the land, but you're next to the big propane tank stuff, yeah.
And the reason, I mean, you're the first person that's really come to us, asking us to make an exception, we just passed the.
Right.
You know, the policy a couple of weeks ago, so that's why this is.
Causing us to think here.
If I could just add to it, I, I guess I have this uncomfortable feeling about issuing, and I'm all in favor of, of your enterprise and everything, and I wish you'd lean towards the Jericho parking lot, I just have this uncomfortable feeling about allowing it at Pier Forty-four, where we're going in another direction completely with Pier Forty-four.
I like Mr. Denny's suggestion also, I just, you know.
Could I ask Mr. Chairman, that he might go down and take another look at Jericho?
I mean, I know exactly what John's talking about.
And see how it works, I mean, it's easy to talk about it here, and not be able, we can try to, try to visualize it, but, you know, you really to go down there, see if that would work. And if the answer is no, it definitely wouldn't work, then maybe we could go back and make a decision on, I mean, that's my thought, anyway.
What's your, what's, Tricia, what's your thought on that location?
Again, I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable if the board acted on these after the police department and Officer Thompson has recommended it. Otherwise, if you're imploding and there's something that we might not be aware of, but, I mean, that certainly sounds like a, a better alternative location.
Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't I make a suggestion, that, you know, there's only so many slots that we have available, and why don't we say that we'll put one slot on hold for you at some location?
Alright.
And, at, at this point, we want to get Officer Thompson to go in and look at the couple of locations you've discussed, and we want to get a letter from the Situate Tavern.
Yep, no problem.
Saying that there, don't have a problem with being within the three-hundred-foot barrier, and then why don't you come back to us at our next meeting?
Okay.
Give us a little bit of time to think about the spot, go look at the spaces ourselves, and then we'll go from there. But regardless of the number of slots that we have available, whether it's Peggotty, Minnied, Egypt, or, or other, we'll, we'll hold one of them for you. Does that sound reasonable?
No, though, it's, we're not going to act on anybody else's yet until we've had an opportunity to.
Right, yeah, yeah, that's my area, let's just say my area of preference is Jericho Road, then, you know, that vicinity.
So what we'll do is, there's no one else on the, on the agenda tonight for Haw- Haw- Hawker Peddler's license, so we'll put you on the next meeting before anybody else that may apply, and then you would have the next choice.
Works for me.
Okay, so, but you have to get us that letter.
Yeah, I will, yeah.
And, and then, Tricia, do you, or who will, who will ask Officer Thompson, Kim?
Yep, Kim will, yep.
I'll get a, I'll get the letter and give it to Kim, so you guys.
Thanks a lot, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Healy, we'll see you next meeting, thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to item number five, which is awarding a contract for diesel fuel, archive storage, and a backhoe.
Thank you. We'll discuss diesel fuel first, we are going to switch. Yeah, well, I know it's one of your favorites.
Kind of is.
Sean is sort of an expert in this area.
Sean, I thought I'd hear that from you first.
Always.
What we want to do is use the low bidder, the best bidder, rather, from the Commonwealth's competitive bidding of a number of services, and this particular service is for diesel fuel. We buy the diesel fuel in the DPW that's used by the schools, the school buses, by the fire department for the vehicles, and of course, for all the DPW equipment. This amounts around seventy-six thousand dollars a year worth of purchases. And we have a fuel management system, such that as fuel is dispensed into any vehicle, there's a chip that is logged in, and that vehicle is actually built for, the, the department that owns that vehicle is built for the fuel. So when the bill comes in, Christine Johnson splits it up among all of the different departments, but we, nonetheless, we buy, we contract for and buy the fuel. We have been using another provider, Dennis Burke, Global Montello Group of Waltham is a, is equally qualified supplier, and offers a price that's very competitive.
Great. So you're asking us to accept the lowest, or the lowest one is the global group?
They're the lowest ones from the state contract, yes.
In discussion?
Yeah, Al, the markup over the average, is it, is it backwards? Is it just under four and a half cents if it's less than the full truckload, but twenty-one, just your notes on the bottom of it? Could you explain that? The bids usually, usually it's a margin over.
It's four point three four cents per gallon.
Right.
Over the low daily Boston wholesale price.
Right.
For the quantities that we buy, which is less than truckload quantities.
Okay.
Okay? Then on top of that, is added the relevant taxes, and the taxes that the municipality pays is twenty-one point four cents, that's federal tax, some state road tax, and half a dozen other little add-on taxes for, you know, cleanup and a dozen other things. So anyway, we pay twenty-one point four cents per gallon for tax on top of those two components.
Anyone else would pay?
And we're doing that today.
Anyone else would pay double that, like forty-six cents, something like that, so. Town municipalities don't have to pay at all.
Great.
Thank you.
Motion, both.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for ultra-low sulfur diesel fuel to Global Montello Group Corporation of Waltham, Mass. At a bid price quoted in the statewide contract award ENE three-two.
Second.
Second by Mr. Daney. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Second contract?
Yes, thanks. We're here to discuss with you awarding a contract for an Archives Record Management System. And your first question might be, well, why would the Director of Public Works be asking about a records management system? And that's because this is a, a step in recovering space in this building that has grown to be filled with important and also obsolete files and other materials. And if you remember, at the, in the last year's, in the budget for this year, we included some money to essentially recover the use of space within this building. We're combining that with some money that was funded by CPC for Archives proper management, through a project that, that Bernice has put forward, and there's about twenty thousand dollars in that project. What we've done in terms of recovering spaces, building, was first, we had a program to get rid of, get rid of and recycle, let's call it junk, that's been accumulated and cluttered the building. Then secondly, we had a, an auction of all items that were usable, got rid of an old car in the cellar, and then dozen, dozens of other items. The only thing we have left is a piano, we're waiting for someone to want the free piano. The third step was, then we hired a firm to come in and audit all of the stored files in the cellar, and they came back with a box-by-box, shelf-by-shelf audit of what is in the town cellar, and then they compared that to what the state requires us to keep, and what the state requires in terms of destroying of files. And we found that we had quite a bit of work to do to get in compliance with the state, and the benefit of that would be, we'd have our files then properly stored, separated in a way that then, as files reach a retention limit, they can be discarded through the proper state method of notifying the state, et cetera, getting permission from the state to destroy stuff. And then also would be, we'd be able to put all of our files in a lockable storage, storage area, as opposed to fairly loosely stored in a, in a very accessible place in the old public grounds garage, which doesn't meet a number of different codes. public grounds garage, which doesn't meet a number of different codes. So we went out for a requested proposals. We got a proposal back from this firm, who is, we then, Bernice went out and interviewed a number of other towns to see who used this firm, and, and we had nothing but glowing reports. Is that correct, you want to weigh in on this?
Absolutely, very pleased. We went over to Easton, and we went down to Kingston, and Baycost to be archivists, to spend, you know, we made this particular group has done all of the work in those three locations, done a wonderful job, and under some very difficult circumstances. We in fact have much better circumstances here for our archives than the other communities have, other than the town.
Is that it?
Just to thank Al for taking me on the tour before our meeting tonight, show me firsthand of what we're in for.
Yep. The tour's available to all of you, by the way.
We'll take Sean's.
Just, just as a side, to follow up, Bernice just said that we are in much better shape than some other communities when it comes to the archives, and that's due, I'm sure, and Bernice will agree, in no small part to the people who've done this for years and years and years, and done it unheralded in many cases. There are people who volunteer their time, who go downstairs, and who, who try to, who do their best, and obviously they do a good job of getting these records in order, and it's not the most exciting job in the world to many of us, but it's so important, and they volunteer, and they just, they're fully devoted to it. So I think the fact that these records were in such good shape speaks volumes of what they've done over the years, over 20-
Very true, Joe, I'm glad you brought it up, because since 1976, when they brought the first archivist in and sent that person to Washington for training under a grant, the work has been going on in the archives, and it's all been done by all of the years. And each successive year, we end up with some of the same people who've added to the group, who've done the same thing again, and it's really impressive what they have learned and what they teach all of us.
Special thanks to them.
Yes.
And good job arranging the funding and finding the sources for this, because it's exactly what the CPA money was for and the other monies as well. Nicely done.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Hold on for one second, I actually wanted, Bernice Brown, town clerk for people who are watching TV, I know Bernice didn't have an introduction, so want to make sure we get that on.
Thanks.
Questions I have, though, is this, with respect to this proposal, are they scanning the documents so that these are going to be put into electric format, electronic format?
The scope of work does not include scanning, and in fact, look, set aside scanning for just a second. And, and also, I'd like to address the word archives and archivists. What, what you're referring to that's gone very, very well is, are the important old records of our town, being able to retrieve information on births and deaths and old buildings and maps and that sort of thing. Where we have a problem is in old payroll records, old, I don't want to name any department, but any, my department in particular, let me just say that, we have probably, well, a lot of stuff in the cellar that we don't know what it is anymore, because it's, it's hard to get at and probably is no longer relevant. The state requires, before we throw any of that away, that we document what it is, apply to the state for permission to destroy it, and then destroy it. Because that's such an arduous step, everything of those, what you would call nuisance files or even discretionary files have built up over the years. So what they will, what they know, John, is what needs to be saved in perpetuity, and what you need to be able to, of those old payroll records, be able to retrieve at any time when asked by someone of interest. Then we have a choice at that point. We can either retain those records in a cataloged system, which they will install, and/or then we can, what's it called?
Microfilm.
Microfilm those records versus scanning, because microfilming is seen by the courts as a legitimate, as equivalent as the original, whereas scanned records can be modified. So for very low money, they can microfilm a lot of those old files that we need to keep versus scanning.
That leads me to the next question, which is that what we're proposing to do by passing this contract is that it's not going to impact, if you will, any type of strategic plan that the Board of Selectmen have with any type of future town office or town hall. In other words, what we're doing is more documents-
Yes.
As opposed to structural, so any money that we invest now is not going to, shall we say, be stuck in the building itself.
Right.
It's going to be stuck with-
It's 100% recoverable.
What we're going to be doing in the future.
Good question.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, we're doing item number four, which is basically that book of information right there, where it says, you can throw this away, and you've got to file documentation for this in each box.
Correct.
That's what we want to do, take that next step.
Yes.
And the $57,000, I heard 20-something of it's coming from CPC, and the rest of it is in, who's, in your budget this year?
It's in the override.
Excuse me?
It was in the override.
In the over, in the override. Okay, so that's part of that-
You know, cleaning out downstairs, records, retention, remember, we wanted, the records weren't fireproof and all that, that was part of the fund. And a clarification of the CPC fund is, we applied three times for grants, but we applied for that money in stages, and where we're getting to be right now was really our end stage, what we really had to complete in order to be able to go forward with microfilming or coming up with secondary sources which would be scanning. So that puts us exactly where we intended to be, as we proposed for three years-
Great.
-that we receive funding.
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for all materials and labor associated with establishing an archival records management program to King Information Systems, Inc. of Norwood, Mass. at prices quoted in the response to the competitive bid open on April 19th, 2012.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the, the third contract, we're going to defer till two weeks from now.
Okay.
And can I make one little pitch?
Sure.
That is that.
Zach, you got that?
Oh, yeah.
This Saturday is Ship Shape Day. It's sponsored by the Beautification Commission, the Police Department, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Department of Public Works, and materials are available at Town Hall, rain or shine, that's how we do things at Public Works, isn't it? At eight o'clock on Saturday morning. People can do it anytime during the weekend.
So let's just say, for instance, hypothetically, there's a group of people that want to participate. They should get up on Saturday morning and go to-
Town Hall.
Town Hall.
Right out front here.
Right out front.
Pick up bags, gloves, grabbers. We have now reflective vests for people who are going to be in any kind of street-side location. The police will be out to help make sure that traffic and everything is under control. Anything that's picked up is put into these special bags and left along the streets, and then Public Works comes along Monday and picks it up. If a family can't get to it until Saturday afternoon or Sunday afternoon, but they want to get the materials on Saturday morning, please come do that. Anytime during the weekend, they can do the pickup along the street, they can be assigned an area, they can volunteer for an area, and then the goodies will be picked up on Monday morning.
And you can even direct them to an area if they're looking for-
Yeah, we have, we have a couple of places in mind.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you, Al. This Saturday. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is a discussion vote for an emergency sewer tie-in at 21 Ann Vinyl Road.
Hi, Frank.
Frank, which from the Board of Health.
Frank, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Frank, is this Texas tea?
Pardon me?
Is this Texas tea?
You don't want to drink it.
Jed Clampert, you know? You didn't get the reference?
That's a distribution box on the property, and blue color, it was curious to me, too, but I think it's just a reflection of the sewage, unfortunately. But it basically shows that the distribution box of the system is completely underwater. This is actually relatively a large lot compared to a lot of the lots that we've dealt with, but you'll notice that most of it is in the wetlands, so doesn't give us any option there. Two test pits were dug, per test failed. The system is basically in the groundwater, as evidenced by the distribution box, and the groundwater in the one test pit was 12 inches, the other one at 27 inches. The residents of the house, there's two people living there right now, is that correct, sir? So there's not as much, shall we say, stress on the system as there would have been in the past, that we didn't have any evidence of ponding in the yard, but they, they can tell you that when family comes to visit and things like that, they have problems, problems with the system, which is not, not surprising, given the conditions at the site. We also passed around a list of all of the butters and the map, and basically everybody, except for the butter immediately on the left looking straight at the house, has already been connected to the sewer, they've got exactly the same type of system. I suspect that other house is going to be seeing us at some point in the future, but if you basically go around this house, everybody else has been connected, and given, again, given the soil conditions, it's not a big surprise there. Mr. Spaff has spoken with the DPW and presented his plan to them, and from, from talking to him, I guess the feedback there was okay, and that's pretty much it.
We're looking at the picture here, is it the-
What's the, what's the address, 21?
21. I marked number 21 there, I think I understood.
So what is that one?
Pardon me? Oh, yeah, stuff is-
That's something else.
You see the hat, the lots with the hash that have been hashed, have all been connected, if you look?
Uh huh. Through emergency or through?
Emergency.
All right, I have one que, well, sorry.
Go ahead.
Question I have is, where is this in the priority districts as far as sewer-ing? Do you know at all, Frank?
I don't.
And I, do you know, Al? It's not, not at all?
This is not a priority area.
Not at all? Wow. I only ask that because it seems like there are a lot of wetland issues in this area, and I'm amazed it's not on a priority.
Can I jump, I gotta jump in before Jennifer does. There's a reason why it wasn't on the priority district, if I misspeak, tell me, Jennifer. Jennifer didn't have, when they were forming those priority districts, she didn't really have a say in, you know, so give her some, give them some input. It had to do with the number of homes, it had to do proximity to, you know, the existing lines and so forth. But there is, that whole area of Rose's Lane includes Joe's old neighborhood, it's all clay, and as you can see from the perks, it was what, less than an inch in two hours or something?
That's why, that's why the line is in the street now, is because we had to connect the school. And when they put that line in the street, they provided the stubs for these houses, so they wouldn't necessarily have to dig the road up again.
So you're connecting-
That's not quite true, I mean, I'm going to vote for this, but that's not quite true. Those stubs were put in with the, with the clear understanding at that time that they were not put in for those homes. We had a lot of discussion over this, and I remember this extremely well.
It wasn't so that they could, they could tie in just because the stuff was in front of the house, but it was that they still had to go through this-
This, this whole area, if I may, what we should probably do is not even go through this anymore. Just allow people from this area to tie in. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's all an emergency, there's nothing that we're going to turn down. I think if the house next door to Mr. Weiss or across the street or the next one, who doesn't have sewers, now came forward, would give them a, would let them tie in. If the houses on, on, was it Bittersweet, which is right up the street, came forward, would have to let them tie in. Fieldstone would have to let tie in, Long Metal we have to let tie in. The rest of the area is all being tied in by the new sewer project. I, I've gone through this, as Frank knows, for years and years and years, and I'm on the stage now, tie everybody in.
One thing you-
They're all, they're all in the same position, they're all, you can get the, the system failed, it's, it's all clay or whatever, tie everyone in, why go through this?
If these only come up, you know, as you know, we've been through this, really, when Title V kicks in, which usually is when people-
Are selling a house.
Or have, have to sell a house.
Yep.
I went through the statistics of, of the emergency sewer connection, connections since I've been doing this, which was 2000, and, and when we started this, we were averaging four or five a year through 2007. And over the last four years, we barely, we've been either doing one or none a year. So I, I think for the reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Norton, that, well, the economy has something to do with it, too, unfortunately, but, but the fact that we, we have done this for a lot of homes already, and the fact is, now that the sewer system, you know, the, the process of getting connected is, is happening, there's, there's less of an urgency for people to do it, and it only really comes up when they, when they need to do a Title V. So, you know, I leave it to the Board as to, as to how you want to go forward on this.
I mean, I, I'm probably being somewhat facetious, but there is no one in that area, and there's not that big an area left down there, who should, who should sell their house without coming to the Board of Health and getting a sewer tie-in. There's no, it would be absolutely foolish for them to spend 25 or $30,000 for septic system when, judging by everything we've seen in the conversation, they're going to get a, they're going to get a sewer tie-in from the Board of Health and from us.
But we do, this is, I mean, this is a situation where the lot can't handle a system, so it would have to take a tight tank. We, we do, and Jennifer can tell you, I mean, every day, she approves systems that, you know, in a perfect world, we would refer to be on a sewer system, but because they can get a system in there, either an innovative system, or they've got a larger enough lot for a, for a standard system, we make them put in, put those systems in there.
But every house in this particular area that I'm talking about, probably, you, for one reason or another, whether the water table is too high, whatever, you probably won't get a system in there, so.
But don't, don't they have to pay a betterment?
Uh, well, I don't think, that's another thing we tried to discuss in the past.
That's where I was going to suggest and say this.
And it's fallen through the cracks.
I think we need to look at this bigger picture. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly not going to vote against it, I, I understand it, but my point is, is that I think we need to look at the bigger picture here and say, okay, if we're going to be saying we're going to sewer this area, or begin to give people the opportunity to tap into this town sewer, we got to look at it from a betterment perspective, because that's the cost to be able to put in legitimate-sized pipes connecting it all. Then the bigger question is, to what extent are we going to be doing that? Because once you begin to go down and put it in front of, further down to Ann Vinyl, I see there's a 40-foot way, I'm not sure if that opens up access to those lots, but assuming they're buildable, if you have sewer, which they would be, then, you know, we don't want to open that up, because then there's going to be free development to all those lots. On the other hand, there are other people who are on Bittersweet, if they have septic system Title V, they're going to be looking for it, so then you have to say, okay, what's the bigger picture here? And I think for tonight, obviously, this is a bigger question that we need to address, and maybe the town needs to look at the bigger issue and the big picture of saying, okay, if we're going to do sewer to some extent, what's the extent of it? What's the cost? Because I think we're losing money as a town by allowing a tie-in on an emergency basis as opposed to saying, if you're paying under a betterment over the course of 20 years, you're, you're picking up those costs for the town. The town's picking up, or deferring the cost to the people who are actually using, the end user, so.
We did talk a little bit about this with that other, last fall, when we were talking about tying in that house on, was it Captain Pierce? There was some discussion, and I think that's maybe, certainly a discussion for another night, but can't we have a policy, Tricia, or set an amount of money? This is, the good news is, this is not going to be a spaghetti line, okay? So it's, we're not going to have to worry about this down the road, any future DPW directors or anyone, this is-
This is a straight pipe to the stub.
That's, that's correct. But couldn't we set a fee for, for, for cases like this?
Well, for all intents and purposes, the Board of Health and the Board have already set a policy, because by saying you're allowing the tie-in, you're saying you're not going to have the option of requiring a tight tank or a raised system. And that's really what's going on here, is there are other options available other than sewer tie-ins to these properties. But if the Board wants to take the approach that they're going to allow the emergency tie-ins, then they're saying, we're not going the route of tight tanks and raised systems for a variety of reasons. So there, you know, I think you can craft a policy, but you have to know all the elements of that policy and all the options available to you before you adopt it.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, I-
The one difference, though, Tricia, we have a lot of ugly raised systems out there, and Joe will remember, we have said no to Board of Health, and they've raised, what we did say was tight tank. If your only alternative was a tight tank, then-
I'm just saying, you have options for addressing the problem that's before you, and if the Board has a philosophy that they don't want, you know, that the raised systems are aesthetically unpleasing, or tight tanks create an undue financial burden that are are aesthetically unpleasing, or tight tanks create an undue financial burden that are greater than, say, any kind of betterment, then that, you know, that's your purview with the Board of Health to do. And every situation is different, and I don't even know if this particular property, it said, Jennifer said, tight tank or sewer connection, and the stub's right there. But I think, you know, this discussion is good to craft a policy to say, instead of these case-by-case bases, is you gonna do it or not?
Come on, him and go first or you?
Go ahead, Frank.
Frank.
The Board of Health doesn't have a policy against raised systems. We, we make people put in raised systems if it's feasible. It wouldn't work here because of the perk rate at all. So the only option here is a tight tank. And, and the tight tank decision has been a discussion that the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen have had for over a decade. And, and the idea of the whole, one of the ideas of the whole policy, and I think the main one is, is to make sure, because we have limited capacity at the plant, that we don't have everybody sort of circumventing the district's plan that the town adopted by, by going through the emergency sewer connection. So we make them prove that they've got an emergency. Because if you put the people on a tight tank, you've lost that capacity in the sewage plant because the tight tank gets pumped into the sewage plant. So, you know, which way do you wanna do it? And we've decided over the years that, that rather than a tight tank, which decreases people's property values and is not a great way of dealing with things, that if that is the last resort, we do it through emergency connection.
And I just wanna say, we need to do a lot more work. Tight tanks don't decrease property values. You know, it's unique to Situate. Raised systems are ugly. Nobody disputes that. But I think there's a bigger picture going on here. The entire venue has no sewer, you know, and those people pump and they, you know, so, and we had a few meetings a couple of years ago, and it raises a much bigger policy issue. And I agree that in this particular situation, there is, I mean, this is the best option that you're recommending. But that it raises, to Mr. Norton's point, instead of doing it a case-by-case basis, you know, what's the Board's approach?
Go ahead, Rick. Joe, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I just think, I mean, we're getting two issues, to bring them up together. What is the issue in front of us tonight? And the other is the, the overall issue of, of, of policy as far as sewage and, and cost of sewage. I mean, I've always said that it's somewhat unfair for someone to come in for an emergency system and be charged $5,000 while there are people down right now in, on Hadley Road and not, mind it, being charged $18,000, $19,000 for the same hookup. And that's just, isn't right. We gotta be fair about the whole thing. But again, that's two different discussions. That's a discussion for a later night, and I think we should try to put that on the agenda to either address that question, do we continue to charge $5,000, or do we go with a standard 15 or $18,000? But that's the discussion for the night. What we're dealing with here tonight is this issue, which, let's say, his grandfather didn't be prior to the other discussion, so I don't have a problem with this, and I'd vote for it, keeping in mind that we need a further discussion.
Both these gentlemen said what I was gonna say.
Just, just out of curiosity, the house has, I assume, a cesspool originally, right? The house, when it was built, has a cesspool?
Right.
And I guess my thought process is, when was the house built? 1960, 1955?
1960, yeah.
And, and my thought was, is that if the cesspool, just out of curiosity, Mr. White, I'm just toying here because I'm just curious about it. If the cesspool worked for those numbers of years, how is it that all of a sudden, when you're trying to put in a leaching field, now granted, there are two different types of mechanisms here, why wouldn't a leaching field work? Given that it worked with a cesspool, even if it were poorer over cesspool for 40, 50 years, how is it that all of a sudden, that now with a, a leaching area? I'm asking it because people on TV are gonna sit here and go, well, the house was built 50 years ago. Why is it that everything was fine until now, recently, now you have to tie in?
If Title V existed in 1960, it would never have been built that way.
The house will be sold.
You're basically putting the sewage into the groundwater.
Title V has changed twice rather than since.
And, and basically, as a result of all of the buildup, and now all of a sudden, now we're having breakout, which means that all the effluent and things are popping up to the, to the, to the topsoil, so that people understand that's the reason why trying to put in a new system isn't going to work. That's, just wanted to explain it.
Thank you.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, just so we can get one thing clear. So there's gonna be a $5,000 fee for an emergency hookup for this case. And Kim, can you put on our neck, if the next meeting's too big than the one after that, to discuss the fees for emergency hookups? And then we'll deal with that. Great.
Motion?
Yes.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to grant an emergency sewer tie-in for 21 and Vinyl Road.
Second.
Further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
One last. Mr. Lynch, how long have you been, you've been on for 12 years with the Board of Health?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Our condolences, I'm not sure.
Think about another committee, maybe, or Board.
Mr. Chair, before we move on regarding the subject, I think the points that, that Joe and John and the rest of us discussed are really, really important. And we have a lot of things that we say we're gonna put on the agenda, but I'd really like us to address this, particularly this area. I mean, Roses Lane, Cairnsley, we've already sort of dealt with that. We've dealt with these other ones, as you all just said. John had a good point. At some point, you gotta draw a boundary, yea or nay. I think maybe in consultation with Jennifer and Al and Frank and all those guys, find out where all these other failing systems are likely to be in there. And maybe outline a really important area that we can look at to put our hands on the problem to see, to put our hands on the problem to see how big we're talking about here. And financially, it's a huge thing that some people are able to get in for five grand and other people get in for 20. And we really need to address this.
Well, the thing is, as somebody brought up, you only address it when you're selling the house.
Right. But we, as a town, need to, to look at this, and, you know, I think it's, two meetings from now is probably optimistic because we need a lot of data before we can, you know, make any real decision on this, is the number of homes we're looking at. I'd also like to know roughly what our alleged sewer capacity is at the treatment plant. I mean, a tight tank, as, as Frank said, doesn't solve the problem, it just changes the mechanism by which the poop gets to the sewage treatment plant. And, you know, I'm, I too am against raised systems and, and that sort of thing. So, but we gotta get our hands around this, particularly for this district. And it takes a while, as we all know, to implement any plan. We've got our hands full with the squash kit right now and so on, but we should start thinking about this. So I think this discussion is really good, but let's make sure we do it.
You have to remember, if I may, Mr. Chairman, that probably, this is without any backup in front of me, the last 15 sewer tie-ins that we've granted.
Right.
All 15 houses have been sold.
Absolutely.
Within three months.
Right, because of Title V. Absolutely.
So that's the reason that, to answer John's concern of early, you know, why now? It's because the house is gonna be sold.
Sure. But proactively, and in terms of like protecting the drinking water supply and all this sort of stuff, I mean, this place has obviously been failing for a long time. It's just had, you know, low usage. And it's just better for the whole overall district, the more we can get on, on sewer, particularly given the financial impact of this, in the sense of some people are getting in with an emergency and some people are not.
Plus, plus the other thing I didn't raise, but if you end up selling, you get on town sewer, then you can expand your number of bedrooms. Whereas when you have a Title V, you can't, because you're limited by the number of bedrooms plus one. So if you have a three-bedroom home, you know, you could blow it up into a five-bedroom home. Where under Title V, you can't. You can only maximize it to four. And while there is a cost there from sewage, granted, there's an increase with, you know, your taxes and the values, but, you know, it just creates a larger and larger.
One last, one last comment. I don't wanna say sewage is my favorite topic by any means, but what we're doing, if I, statistics are correct, 15 of the last 15 have all been sold.
Probably.
What we've done is we're giving, we've given sewage to 15 new residents of Situate.
Right.
In the meantime, people who have had, lived here for 50 years, and that suffered through breakouts and septic system and repairs and all that, don't get it. So someone who just moves into town gets it immediately, as soon as they pass papers to the house. Someone who's been here for 50 years doesn't get it. And something's wrong with that philosophy.
And I also, and I agree, and I'll also add to that, they've been getting it at a subsidized rate.
Well, I think conceptually, we all agree that the inequality of the rates is, is unfair. So I think right away, at our next meeting, we can agree to do something with that portion of it. Any sort of analysis in terms of what the, what this area's impact could be on the capacity of the sewer is secondary. If we just say, look, you wanna do it, it's gonna be the same price as you're putting in a tight tank or whatever, or if you were actually hooked up to a betterment.
I mean, I don't think we have, anyone here has the expertise to determine, even though we see all these houses in this area, we don't have the expertise to say, this area is any better or any worse than any other area in Situate that's got a sewage is concerned. You know, it's just that these people have, coincidentally, all seem to tie in for one reason or another. That's all. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Great. Item number seven is exceptions of a resignation from the Pier 44 Committee. The clerk wanna read that?
Sure. I'd like to read the, you want the motion or read the letter?
How about the letter?
Okay, sure. This is from Ed DeSalvio, Edward V. DeSalvio, Jr., who's resigning from the Pier 44 Building Options and Feasibility Study Committee. Dear Selectmen, please accept this letter of resignation from the Pier 44 Committee. As a member of the Pier 44 Committee, I was privileged to be part of the completion of the Phase 1 report, which has been delivered as well as presented to your Board. Unfortunately, I will not be able to continue on the committee during Phase 2 of the committee's charge. I have enjoyed working on this project with a wonderful group of talented committee members. I also appreciate all of the support that was provided to the committee by many town officials, including the town administrator, the building commissioner, and the Department of Public Works. I wish you and the Pier 44 Committee great success in the upcoming Phase 2 of this important project. Respectfully submitted, Ed DeSalvio, Jr.
And I think we all wanna add, you know, the presentation that they gave the other night was so thorough, they did a great job. It took, it took a while to do it, but that's because they put the energy and the work into doing it the right way. So Ed, thank you for your leadership there, and hopefully we'll see you in some other capacity.
I'd like to move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Edward DeSalvio from the Pier 44 Building Options and Feasibility Study Committee. And further, the Board thank Mr. DeSalvio for serving as the chairman of this committee as well as lending his considerable time and expertise to this important town project.
Second by Mr. Danhee. Further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous? Item number eight, also, there's an opening on that committee now, so if anyone's interested in Phase 2.
Mr. Chairman, it's my distinct pleasure to have the opportunity to read the Arbor Day proclamation as clerk of the Board.
We've been waiting all night for this.
I know you have also, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have.
I notice you're wearing your green coat, too.
Thank you very much. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the Town of Situate has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting practices. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Situate, do hereby proclaim April 27, 2012 Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed by the Town of Situate Board of Selectmen, Anthony V. Vignani, Chairman, John F. Danee, Sean Harris, Richard W. Murray, and Joseph P. Norton.
I think you could have shortened it to, I Love Tree proclamation.
Second?
Second, I'll second that.
Oh, wait.
No motion necessary.
I'll still second it.
Moving on to item number nine is the town administrative report.
Thank you. I just have one item, but I'd like to take a little time to discuss it with you. One of the great things that was provided in the override was funds for staff training. And over the past year, we've been able to send a number of different town personnel to various training opportunities. Those have ranged to management and supervisory training for the sergeants in the police department, to supervisory and management training for the water superintendent, to additional accounting training for staff in the accountant's office, to a multi-phase training program for professional staff in the area of communication, time management, and customer service. So one of the things that we embarked on earlier this month was to look at the way we provide service to the customers in the town, both internally and externally. So at the staff meeting, the earlier part of this month, we spent two and a half hours developing a customer service mission statement. And as you can see from the memo that I gave you to the staff, every single department was asked to submit what they viewed as a customer service mission statement. And department heads and staff were used to doing mission statements for their department, but they were asked to do it as a whole. And you have copies of all the ones that every single department in town submitted. And that's what we used as the basis to work on during the staff meeting and whittled those down after a long process, but a good process, I think, three. And right now, those three are being voted on by town staff. And hopefully, all the responses will be in May 1, and we'll be able to have a universal customer service mission statement for the Town of Situate that we'll be able to use on stationery or on a website or just in every department to know that we're committed to our customers and how we intend to deliver that. That was the first step in a multi-phase process. The second step was to provide all of the staff on the town side with customer service training. That started today in conjunction with a training program through Massasoia College. We sent 42 people through it today. There's four three-hour sessions over the month of May. There's a group in the morning, there's a group in afternoon, whole departments are going, so they can work together to talk about customer service. And then we'll have another group run through in June. And we hope to have probably about 100 of the town staff run through that. The second session will involve most of the highway and grounds and parks crew because they touch the public, but in a very different way than people in town hall or the library or the council on aging do. So I wanted to share all the good work that the staff's done with you and encourage you to come, stop by one of the training sessions we're having over the next four Tuesdays and Thursdays. And really just wanna, you know, thank the community again for supporting the override for something that doesn't seem really important, maybe, but, you know, we can do wonderful things if we have adequate resources, and, and this is one, I think, that's really gonna provide direct benefits back to the customer who pay our salaries. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Great. And we have a little ballot here. You want us to circle which one of the three we like?
Sure, and you can leave it in the box in Sheila's office.
Great. Can we edit it a little bit?
No.
We'll circle one. Great. Well, I think, again, we wanna thank the town for supporting the override. This is a small portion of what the town side is using with their funds, but this is something that Mr. Murray, you know, through the interview process that we have with you, said, this is an important feature that we're looking for in our town, and we wanna, we wanna focus on customer service, and we wanna make sure that we take steps in that direction. And I, and I'm sure he and everyone else on the Board, you know, appreciate this effort. There's always gonna be those, those Ted to Ted-ish occurrences in town, and what we hope is that also, when people come into town hall, that they also are courteous to the employees here as well, so. Great. Any questions, any comments? Move on to item number 10, actually, other business? Any other business from?
I just have one thing I'd like to bring up, Mr. Chairman. I attended this morning, for most of the morning, a task force formed by the, the school department, including parents, educators, psychologists, chief of police, dealing with school department, including parents, educators, psychologists, chief of police, dealing with teenage drinking and, and the, to try to come up with a, a clear policy or a clear set of ideas of how to address this, this serious, if not sometimes fatal, problem. And I just want to, it's, it's an ongoing process. We had our second meeting this morning, there'll be another meeting around the 1st of May and there's a large regional meeting, I think it's May 7th in Hingham. I just want to publicly thank everyone that participated, the parents, the 15 or so parents and the educators who, who participate in this, who take their time to do it because it's, you know, we can talk about a lot of things that, that we do for the youth of town and it's all good, it's all good. But if, if we don't deal with the problem of underage drinking, the fatal problem in many cases, it's all for naught. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention and congratulate those people. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that this Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Situate GAR, Grand Army of the Republic on Country Way, there is going to be the Situate Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum. That's for all the candidates who are running this May and the, there will be a question and answer period for all those people. Donuts and coffee are going to be served, again, at 10:00 AM at the GAR on Country Way this Saturday morning at 10:00 AM and probably about an hour, hour and a half of what it will be. All the prospective candidates who are running for office are invited and many of which will be showing up, so it'd be a great opportunity for people who are interested to participate. So, that's what I have.
Yeah, I just would like to express a thanks to everybody involved, particularly Mr. Reedy, Paul Reedy, and the Renewable Energy Committee. We had the wonderful pouring rain Saturday?
Sunday.
Sunday. Pouring rain Sunday, opening of the wind turbine. We had the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs down, Rick Sullivan, I believe it was, Secretary Sullivan, and several other individuals. They were probably, what, I did sort of a rough head count, about 130 people crammed in the pouring rain tent?
Yep.
134, I think.
134, okay, yeah. That was before I left, so maybe that was, that was why I was awfully a little bit. But Mr. Vignani had some good words and it was a great event. It was very impressive to see all the different people from the different state boards and commissions who are very aware of what we're doing in Situate, not only with the wind turbine, which was the subject at hand, of course, at the time, but the solar array and ESCO was mentioned and, I mean, across a whole spectrum, we are doing a lot of energy savings and money savings, which is good for the environment and good for the town, good for jobs all at once. So it was just a great event and, of course, it was the only day it rained in the last six months, but so it goes. It was a good event.
I just, I'll add to that, it was a, you know, it was, it was interesting to see what leader the Town of Situate is in the green initiatives and the fact that we're going to be paying for 100% of our electrical needs through the wind turbine and the solar array, you know, is quite impressive and probably, we're probably the only community in the state that, that can boast that. A great turnout by people, Al Banger and his group that put the event together. Unfortunately, it was not a really family event because of the rain, but there was still a good turnout there and just the, the thanks of all the people that had participated and you really realized how outreach-ing it was to the people that were involved in getting that turbine to swi, to spin. So, thanks to all those people again. Just repeat also that this Saturday is Shipshape Day, so please, if you have an hour or a little bit of spare time, go pick up a bag and, and pick up some trash in the community. And la, go ahead.
One more, go ahead. I'll, I'll just jump in for one more.
Yeah, the last thing I want to say is, I'm sure everyone felt it in the air yesterday, but baseball season started yesterday. I know John knows, because he's got a, a little guy out there with myself as well. And so all the fields will be full with nine-year-olds through 16-year-olds playing baseball. So go out and watch them and cheer them on and, and enjoy the, the spring sport.
Try to care slowly around the fields.
Just, on a note that, something that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, as far as the savings from the wind turn, but, wind turbine and the solar field, I've probably heard the past month, five different ways that that money is going to be spent. Everyone seems to have, be talking about, well, we can do this and we can use the money from the solar. I think we should have a conversation, this Board, as, as to how that money is going to be spent, the savings are going to be spent. There's quite a few options, not quite a few, but there are a couple of options and I think we have to discuss it before we go much further, before too many more people start spending it for us.
Great, I think that's a great idea. You know, we, we clearly, when we talked about this a year ago or something, we clearly said we had not decided on which way we were going to do it. So, so that's a great idea. We set up the revolving fund to, to account for it, so now it's a matter of figuring out how we're going to allocate it out and how we're going to utilize it to help our future. I don't know, when's the best time for that meeting?
We can figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing I'd like to follow up on Joe's point is, we all, myself included, use shorthand wording when we say, the wind power is going to contribute half of the town's power and the solar array is going to contribute half of the town's other power. We use that meaning town and schools and municipal buildings. I've been approached by many people who hear us when we say town and they say, oh, and they hear us interpret all the residents as well. And so I just, you know- Good point. We're making points, we should really, I, I'm trying to use the word myself, municipal and schools, use those words, particularly drawing attention to the sewage treatment plant up front. But I had a interesting conversation with a neighbor who was surprised that his electric bill hadn't gone down literally last week. Yeah, yeah.
So it, the savings are, just so people understand, it is for the municipal buildings, the schools, the water treatment plant, the sewer treatment plant, the street lights, the town hall, you know, all the municipal buildings and the expenditure that we have is where the savings will be incurred, not unfortunately to the households in the town. Any other new business? Move on to item number 11.
There are no, there is no correspondence, Mr. Chair.
And number 12?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the minutes of April 5th and April 9th, 2012.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous? And executive session?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigating position for the Department of Public Works and Fire Department. The Board will not return to regular session this evening.
Murray?
Yes.
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 Mr. Harris?
Yes.
All right, folks, thanks, Zach.